My clock says seven o'clock and I think we got all our board members, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Um, welcome everybody and glad we can at least meet this way. Can I have roll call Cindy, please?
Sure Cindy Valentine here, Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Ernie Bryson.
Here.
Maureen Bory. Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, all accounted for. First thing I'd like to do is actually amend the agenda. I sent everybody out an email. I think it's number seven. It's the last thing on the agenda for recommendations for appointment to ZBA. That should be Ken Lipowsky. Last name spelled L-I-P-O-W-S-K-I. Instead of referencing Debbie Addy there. So that's a motion.
Ernie, I thought you were putting Debbie Addy from alternate on the ZBA and adding Ken as an alternate.
Right, but he'll be replacing Debbie Addy as alternate.
Gotcha, but not on the agenda, I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Well, I think we should reflect Ken Lipowsky here.
Yes, we have to amend it to add him, but I'm just saying we're not replacing Addy or Debbie off of the agenda. She's still staying.
Yes.
Okay.
So under new business seven, it should read ZBA recommendation appointments, Ken Lipowsky for ZBA appointment for alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joanne. All right, all in favor, sign up for any discussion? Daring none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, moving right along, we have a roll call, please. I mean, roll call pays billable. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills at one hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and two cents.
Support. A motion and support. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'd like to have you send me a copy of the
Yeah.
general ledger. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do a general ledger report mailed to the whole board.
Look at.
Okay, we have a mute some people here. I have a motion for bills payable for one hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and two cents. Roll call vote, please.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yep.
I said yes.
Okay. We'll mute some people here.
Did you say my name Cindy?
Did.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, is that it? Motion pass. All right, moving right along, we have a supervisor's report. Brace yourselves. It's actually been a busy week. High water, actually. Our current status, I checked it today, we are at five seventy-six point seven five above sea level and that's actually two inches lower than we were at our last meeting. So that's good news. I kind of promised myself, once we hit five seventy-six point five, I won't be doing these reports ever, every meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to totally skip this. So that's good news. And our COVID, you know, I'm sure there's no, no, no big news anyone. In cases throughout the whole county and we did have some issues with our own township in our wire department. Everybody's back and well. And we have one positive case in our office staff, but that person conducted or infected actually while they were on vacation and is in quarantine and doing well. So there was no spread in our office. And I'm not sure what we have, George, one or two people in the fire department still? And it's all right.
No, everybody, everybody's back to work as of today.
Okay, I know we had one or two people quarantined or one positive in the police department, but everyone's doing well with it. I did receive an email today, actually, from the St. Clair County Health Department. We actually got the county received their first shipment of vaccination today. They got the Moderna vaccination out to Pfizer and they're going to start vaccinating people ASAP. I assume that's tomorrow as their phase, first phase, A1 phase, they call it. So that's going to start rolling. Been working at getting quotes for our garbage contract and I'm hopeful to have two good quotes right now. So for the board. That's not, not at the March, but I'd like to get that ironed out, you know, end of January or so. And so I can keep moving on with that. Been dealing with a lot of building and blight issues. And we actually talked to our building attorney today about getting more aggressive with dangerous buildings moving forward. And we also have some issues with FEMA enforcement that we're talking about, among other things. Looking, still looking to set up a joint meeting with Ira to review the OHM report on our sewer interceptor. It really does seem like COVID's getting away of that. That'll probably be postponed until in January sometime. Phase one of our bike repairs is completed. We took about four hundred and fifty feet of the section that was underwater, built it up with grindings about a foot. And we were going to try to put a two-inch cap on top of that in the spring with asphalt. And also in the spring, the rest of it will be, all the cracks will be sealed and the other bumps will be filled. And the whole thing will be sealed. And just to remind everyone, we did receive a forty thousand dollar matching grant to, to pay for that project. The, we did close on the house, the White House where the the beach park, the county beach park is, is, is going to be and the county will be taking possession of that the end of this month. Been working every day on the one million dollar sawed grant and really the sewer interceptor project. And actually today, it's done, we talked about our last meeting, that I call it the DWAM grant, the drinking water and asset management grant. Mailing that in tomorrow. In fact, here it is, twenty-eight pages. So that's done. And it actually came out to more than what we, you know, we kind of guessed, you know, be three, four hundred thousand. It's actually came out to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars. So hopefully we get that. I think we, if I remember that right, we'll know the end of March, sometime in that timeframe. I want to give kudos, actually, to the Pearl Beach Lions and the water department and fire department for decorating the park this year. With Christmas lights. Pearl Beach Lions also did a Santa parade yesterday. It started over by the, our fire department went through the township and see Alonack and ended back up at, at the park and they lit the Christmas tree. So that's all I have on that. And moving right along to public comments, I'm going to unmute everybody. Carol Sampson. I'm unmuting you. Trying to. Does, now it's time for public comments. Does anyone have any public comments?
Carol Sampson.
Yeah.
Did you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to say that the walkway in the state park that you were just mentioning about, it is very nice. I go out there every day with my dog and it's, it's, it's pretty nice. It'll be better when you put the asphalt on it. And the other thing is, I want to know if we can put the couple, public comments down towards the end of the meeting like we used to have years ago and like the planning commission, because I see there's the memorandum from Whitey on here with the planning commission. And if I have any comments after that's all taken care of, I was wondering if, you know, we could have the public comments later in the meetings. So we can do them after everything else is discussed.
Well, actually, we put in the beginning of the meeting because, so the, all the trustees, the decision makers can hear whatever you want. You want to comment on before we make the decision. I mean, if, if, if you, if we put it at the end, you're just going to complain about the decisions we just made. You know, you're not going to, there's no value.
The other meetings, though, we, we have the public comments and then you guys make decisions and stuff, but we don't have anything to say afterwards. Because there's no public comments afterwards.
Right, but that's why we put it in the beginning. So, so.
We don't, we're going to be talking about like last.
Well, it's on the, on the agenda, Carol. I mean, that's where it is. So.
Yeah, hey, Ernie, the, the, the public hearings, there's two public comments on it. Once, there is a public comment at the beginning and then the one at the end when there's public hearings at the planning.
Right.
Or that, that may be the issue.
Yeah, the public comments are at the end of the planning commission for the public. If we could have public comments at the end of the board meetings too, instead of at the beginning.
Okay, well, we can take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You have a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, okay. Any other public comments? I'm trying to unmute. Harold?
Yes. Hi, Ernie.
Hi.
I got a question that I was reading an email that was sent out to a lot of people about the December fourteenth, it was sent, and I'd like to read it. And it's, it's real short and it's talking about something that you have a definite interest in. It says, "I am disappointed that the planning commission chose not to revoke on the amended to the master plan. The change in the master draft was not on November meeting published agenda. I do not believe the agenda was ever amended to reflect a change in the master plan draft. It seems like it was just added from a spontaneous motion from somewhere down the board." It says, "The board of trustees may have an issue with this process because I'm not going to spend township money on a legal opinion on a question, but I know that the state has a set deliberate process on approval of the master plan with the public hearing in the comment periods." And I would guess the significant change, which there was no significant change, on the eleventh hour may have sidestepped the process. I think that the planning commission would have revisited the issue, readopted the draft of the master plan, would have been prudent thing to do before it goes to the board. Well, I have something right here from Rod stating that it was already amended on the seventeenth of November. And then you strong-armed it right back into it on December ninth of the master plan discussion. Consider motion to rescind previous motion to adopt the master plan approved on the seventeenth. You thought it wasn't done right. You said you weren't going to spend any money on it. Well, I don't see where we did anything wrong. Just because you don't like it, doesn't mean that the whole Clay Township wouldn't like it. I'm just amazed that you are still in the ferry business.
I'm not in the ferry business.
Don't even go there, Ernie. You are, you are way beyond that right now, way beyond that. Strong-arming Rod and Kathy? Are you serious about this?
This is going to be a topic of discussion in our agenda and I'm going to go over.
You have a lot of secret meetings with these agendas with other people, I can see.
No negative.
I have all the emails to prove it.
I emailed Rod. I copied you, the planning commission on the emails. I emailed Rod and Kathy. I'm not hiding anything. I'm transparent as, as possible.
Really? Transparent as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yes, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, good evening. For those of you that, my name is Chris Holcomb, twelve oh two Gore Drive, Parsons Island. I am also the vice chair of the planning commission. I'm very proud of the work that the planning commission does. We work very hard. And we work very well together with the assistance of our excellent planners at Giffords Webster and have accomplished a lot in the past years that I've been on the board. And the comment that I'd like to make is in regards to an item on your agenda under new business. Planning Commission recommendations for appointment of Debbie Addy and Bill Greitop. There was an attached recommendation on your agenda that is undated, unsigned. I don't know who made the recommendation. And it's to replace our current chairperson, Kathy Schweickert, and Harold Bain with Debbie Addy and Bill Greitop. And I'll admit, I am not familiar with Ms. Addy at all. I'm only familiar with Mr. Greitop just by his name with his previous positions in the county. I'm sure they're fine people and I don't mean any disrespect to them at all, but I am familiar with Kathy and Harold. And for those of you that are not familiar with them, I'll let you know that Kathy has served on the planning commission for over fifteen years. She is the most tenured commissioner. She's been our chairperson for at least the past six years and has done an outstanding job leading the commission. Mr. Bain has been a commissioner for the past three years and he also sits on the zoning board. The experience and the knowledge that these two people bring to the planning commission is immeasurable and immense. And I can tell you from personal knowledge that both of these individuals reached out to the township when they found that their commissions were going to expire and requested being reappointed. Neither of them have received a comment back. No email back, no acknowledgement, no sorry, but we're going in a different direction. I find that very troubling, very troubling. And I'd just like to ask the board to reconsider and to possibly amend their agenda to not, to reject the recommendations to appoint Ms. Addy and Mr. Greitop and instead to reappoint Ms. Schweickert and Mr. Bain. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yes, my name is Kathy Schweickert. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. I want to actually say thank you to Christine for her comments. I appreciate that, but I also would like to fill in some blanks here. Normally how the process works in the past years that I've been on this is that our building department, City Babish, or before that, her predecessor was sent out to all board members whose terms were expiring that, hey, if you're going to want to be reappointed, usually it was in writing now because of, I think, different things we're doing with COVID with email. So I reached out to Cindy and say, hey, you know, there's three of us. At the time, I thought didn't have these letters and/or emails and it only ended up being actually Harold and I. On December first, I reached out to Ernie, CC'd Cindy, very short. You know, I would love to continue serving for our community on the planning commission and please consider my name for reappointment. And I know Harold, I believe, did it on December second. Again, no response, nothing, which is fine. Again, I know Mr. Greitop, I don't know Debbie and that's fine. I would say or would respectfully like to remind the board that our supervisor, Mr. Bryson, can make recommendations. But you board members are the ones who get to also vote on it and you don't have to follow what he has to say by any means. He's there to give recommendations and you can make the decision from there. So again, I've served this community for quite a while. There are things that Mr. Bryson and Mr. Bain got into about master plan. And I got to say we've worked very hard on our master plan. I personally have reached out to the attorney, because I'm not an attorney, nor am I a professional planner. And Mr. Bryson had asked us to reconsider what we had done in our November meeting for the master plan. And did I reach out to our township attorney? It's not Mr. Bryson's attorney, it's our township attorney. I did. And we did not violate any rules. We considered it appropriately. Mark Bouchard, actually, if anybody wants to go back and review our minutes and/or the Zoom meeting, was the one who made the motion to amend the agenda when we got to that point. So whether you agree with it or not, Mr. Bryson, we didn't violate any rules as far as I know. And the township planner also they've been fabulous. We've had the best township planners and they've worked very, very hard. I can't say enough good about them. And you know what? They give us their opinion. They give us the information. We deal with it. We're not yes people. We're trying to make independent decisions and it's a township board, planning commission board, there's nine members. So if you don't really like what I have to say, there's nine members that vote on this. So we're trying to do the best we can for our township, for our citizens, and that's what we would like to continue to do. But I respect everybody's decision and what they need to do or not do. And I thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Any public comments? Let's see, I see iPhone. Keith. Bill Greitops, William Holcomb. No one raising their hands?
Hello?
Hello.
Ernie.
Yes, please state your name and address.
This is Donna Holocoglou. I'm under William Holocoglou on the site. So you may not notice that, but I'm under William. I, I'm just kind of walking into this and I'm a little confused as to why the planning commission were not reappointed and, and I really don't even know what this is about as far as a November meeting. But is there any reconsideration that the township could have to reappointing these people? Clearly, even from Christine, it sounds like they were very well respected on the committee. So my question is if there's any way that they, they could be reconsidered.
Well, yeah, it's a board decision and, and we'll be talking about it later in the meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just stating my opinion as a person, as a citizen that has just walked into this, not understanding under what grounds they were not reappointed after fifteen years of service, for one. And I'm just stating that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Donna. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you too.
Any other public comments?
Ernie, can you hear me?
Yeah, state your name and address.
Bill Greitop. Your county commissioner for another nine days. And then I make a re-exit from you guys. I just want to say thank you to Clay Township, to all of the people in Clay Township, all the constituents, all the administration, the police, the fire and everybody involved for making my job a lot easier because of the cooperation that I received from Clay Township and all the people in Clay Township. It has been an absolute pleasure serving for you people and to turn this around in a different direction. At this point, Ernie, I am going to withdraw my name from our consideration from the planning commission. I was under the impression that there were openings and not that I would be displacing anybody. And I can hear some dissension among the groups, fifteen-year members, three-year members. So Ernie, I'd be more than happy to serve on your commission if you have an opening that is not created by my taking somebody else's place. Apparently, these people would still like to be on there. And I have no desire to replace anybody in that form. If it was an opening that somebody stepped down, be more than happy to serve with you. So just take my name off there, please.
All right, all right, Bill, no problem. Thanks a lot. And thank you. All right, any more public comments? Daring none, moving right along. I think I'm here. Moving right along to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the meeting minutes from December seventh and the special meeting from December eighth of 2020. Support.
Okay, we have a support. Is there any discussion on, on the consent agenda? Daring none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, next we have new business. First thing is St. Clair County right-of-way resolution to work in the road right-of-way. We do this every year. Basically telling the St. Clair County, we have insurance on our guys and to work in their, in their road right-of-way and this kind of makes sure that gives them assurance that we do have insurance and that gives our guys permission to work in the right-of-way.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-seven, the St. Clair County Road Commission Right-of-Way Resolution.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Daring none, roll call vote, please.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion gap passes. Next, the fire department, we have four new hires, part-time. Chief, you want to?
Ernie, do you want me to go through each one of them and then you guys vote on all four or do you?
We'll vote on all four unless someone has a problem with them.
Okay, I'm asking permission from the township board to hire four new part-time firefighters. The first one is Brian Paul Moran. He's presently a firefighter in Fort Sanlack Fire Department. He is firefighter one, firefighter two, and currently a Michigan State Certified EMT. The second one is Stephen Johns Sherard, presently a firefighter at Ray Township Fire Department. He has firefighter one and firefighter two. I did make a mistake on his sort of medical certifications. He is an EMTP, which is a paramedic. And he's also an IC in the medical field also.
He is an E M T P, which is a paramedic, and he's also an IC in the medical field also. Uh, the third is Jacob Tyler White. He's presently a firefighter at St. Clair Fire Department. Uh, he has firefighter one, firefighter two, and currently a state certified EMT. And the last is Taylor James Gerard. He's presently a firefighter at Deckerville Fire Department. He has firefighter one and currently a Michigan State Fire, uh, excuse me, currently a Michigan State Certified EMT.
Are any of them on Zoom, on, on this call?
I thought there might be, but I don't see anybody.
Okay. We can bring them back when we can meet in person, hopefully.
Yeah. And if you guys still decide to hire them, I have to bring them down to get sworn in so I can at least introduce them to yourself, Cindy and Christie.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for chief or would want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of four part-time fire departments. Employees of Brian Moran, Stephen Sherard, Jacob White, and Tyler Gerard.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion? It's great. They're all qualified. We don't have to do much training with them.
Chief, you're on a roll right now. Good additions.
Right. Things are, are looking very positive in the fire department, I must say. So, uh, any more discussion on, on the motion?
Great Christmas present for the county.
I'm sorry, Maureen. Is there somebody else?
Who supports?
Who, who supported this motion?
I did.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Joanne did.
Thank you.
Okay, we have motion and support for all four new hires for the fire department. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hey, motion carries. Good job. All right, next, uh, we have, uh, the question for septic field. Um, for this for the Harson's Island Fire Department, everybody knows we, uh, have a poor, oh, really, almost a non-existent septic field. And, uh, chief has been talking with the health department. We talked to, uh, uh, the Harson's Island Lions about utilizing their septic field to help the island fire station out, which they agreed to. And, um, he's got some quotes. You want to take it away, chief?
Thank you, Artie. I'm asking permission from the township board to replay, to install, replace the septic field at, uh, the Harson's Island Fire Station. Uh, we've been having some issues with that for many years. And I'm requesting permission to replace it. Uh, the project will not exceed $10,340. And I would like to take this money from, uh, 20600971, which is capital outlay improvements. Uh, the cost includes, um, we would have dilute company due to the, um, the directional boring, which is a two-inch line, which will go from the fire station all the way to, uh, the Lions Club. That's about 200 feet. Uh, that's going to cost around 28, uh, $2,840. And then, uh, we'll, I'm looking at hiring Ron Jessup, who lives on the island. That's, um, been putting in septic fields on the island for many, many, many years. Uh, and that would be a 1,250 gallon tank with a 110 motor to pump the gray water to that septic field behind the Lions Club. And that's going to cost about $6,500. And then we're going to have to have a electrician to hook up the service from the tank pump to the, uh, into the fire station and then to, uh, our panel. And that's about a thousand dollars. Uh, I would do, be pulling the permits for that. And before we do this project or before anything goes, I would go in front of, uh, the supervisor and also the clerk to, um, show them what the quotes are going to be.
You've already done that, right?
Yeah, uh, I have some of the quotes already. Um, the only one that we did not get was from Ron Jessup, and that was for the tank. I was waiting for that, but he did quote it over the phone at $6,500 and that's install the new tank and remove the old tank. The old tanks got to come out of the ground.
Okay, so we're assuming that $6,500 could be less?
It could be less.
Okay, so not to exceed 10,340?
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the, uh, septic, Harson's Island septic tank connection to the Lions, uh, club, Harson's Island Lions Club, uh, for the tune of $10,340 out of line item 20600971-00.
We have motion and support. Hey, George, you want to take out that line anymore? We have 933, which, uh, .01, which is maintenance for the Harson's Island Fire Hall. We got $25,000 in, in that line item.
We can take it out of that if that's, that's.
I mean, that's where I assumed it was coming from, but.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll amend the motion to, uh, replace, uh, 206 with that line item that you just mentioned.
93301.
93301.
Still supporting.
Okay. Any more, uh, questions?
I see we have an agreement in place. We have all the permits in place. Looks like we're ready to go.
Yeah, we've been working on this, kind of putting it together and thinking about it for about a year, I think. And it needs to happen, so.
Just to let everyone know that the, uh, the septic tank does, will belong to the Harson's Island Lions Club, although we're putting a new one in, but.
So. The field, the field belongs to the Lions. The tank belongs to the, the fire department. Right. Um, we signed an agreement that any maintenance or, or cost to maintain the septic field will split with the Harson's Island Lions.
Perfect.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. Uh, let's see, that's over $10,000. Uh, roll call, please.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryce?
Yes.
Maureen Bory? Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Borchard?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Chris Oregan?
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, George. Next, we have a presentation on the master plan from Ifill and Webster. Hey Rod, how you doing?
Hey, how you doing, Artie?
Good. Do you, uh, want me to share the screen with somebody or?
Yeah, with me. Let, let me share the screen and I can, uh, put up a quick, uh, presentation for you. So it says disabled, so you have to enable.
Okay, try it now.
Okay. Ah, there we go. There we go. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, well, I'm pleased to be here this evening to provide the township board with an overview of the master plan that the planning commission has been working hard on for over a year now. Um, they did vote at their, at their last meeting to adopt it and now it comes to the township board. So I want to, um, provide you with just a brief discussion to give you an overview of the work that's been done. I always like to start off by just explaining what a master plan is. It is a long-range policy document that's used by the township as a guide for future land use. Um, and it requires that, uh, the state does it at a minimum every five years that, uh, a community review their master plan and update it if necessary. Uh, the future land use plan map, which is a key part of the master plan, is not the zoning map and it does not change zoning. A lot of times there's some confusion that you're rezoning property with a master plan. Well, you're not rezoning anybody's property. Any change to a zoning map requires notice to property owners, uh, per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. It requires a separate public hearing, and this is all outlined in the, in the zoning ordinance and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Uh, just a brief overview of the outline and the way it's structured. We've got basically our existing conditions, which is what do we have right now and what are we working with in terms of background uh, information? And we've got our vision. Where do we want to go? What, what are we looking to do as the community grows? And then we have action strategies that are included in the plan. Um, we've included a regional setting. There's demographic analysis to update demographics. All maps have been updated with natural features to provide an overview of the important resource because township is fortunate to have so many um, in, important natural resources. Um, we've also included a new section on resiliency and sustainability that looks at vulnerability, um, to hazards, particularly flooding and to, um, and trying to provide, um, for opportunities for the, for the township to be resilient. Public input was, it was a huge part of this as well. Um, we kicked this off in June of 2019 with a joint meeting with the township board, the planning commission, ZBA, and I believe the DVA was also there, uh, talked about assets and future ideas. We had open houses on Harson's Island and at the township hall in November of 2019. We had a public input survey. We had over 200, exactly 250 people responded. Um, and we've got some good of public input that really helped the planning commission in formulating, um, the recommendations, um, in the document. Planning commission ended up with some key, uh, vision, um, elements. One is supporting, maintaining and protecting the character of residential areas, uh, providing for, um, enhancing and protecting natural resources in order to provide for a resilient outdoor lifestyle. It's so important in the area. Um, having an open and efficient transportation system using different modes of transportation. Um, you have water trails, you have, uh, bike, um, bike paths and bike lanes and, and, and this, uh, this plan actually includes a complete streets plan, which I'll talk about in a minute. And the local economy, um, policies to strengthen and grow existing businesses and promote new development and grow the tax base. Um, there are some new designations in this plan. Um, from the previous plan, we have a category called residential transition. Um, this generally serves as a transition between waterfront commercial and waterfront residential areas. Uh, most likely to remain, remain mostly single family, but there is limited, uh, amounts of house scale attached units, mixed use, live work, and some non-residential plan in these areas. We have mixed use areas designated for our three focus areas, which I'll talk about in just a second. And then we have waterfront residential two, which is, um, an area for some more compact residential buildings, um, closer to the walkable, some of the walkable areas. Density up to six dwelling units per acre and single family and some limited attached units being permitted in those areas. Another thing that, uh, element that's new to this is, is housing density plan. It's actually a map that shows planned densities, uh, easy reference tool, uh, for the township. Uh, the East End Development District is very important and one of the three focus areas. It's, uh, basically at the, uh, east end of the, of the mainland, right up, uh, adjacent to Algonquin. And, uh, we included a number of, of, of mixed use recommendations there, also taking advantage of the future county park in that area. This is envisioned as being much more walkable, providing for some buildings a little closer to the roadway, lots of pedestrian connections, you know, lots of creativity here. Uh, Pearl Beach was the second focus area, um, provided, this is much more limited in scope in terms of, uh, non-residential development, has a small mixed use area right at the corner of Pearl Beach and Point Tremble. Um, and then, um, a mix of some commercial and residential transition, uh, uses in this area as well. And then finally, Sansucci on Harson's Island, uh, looking at this area, obviously an important mixed use area, uh, providing for, um, flexibility and development to kind of carry on the existing character that exists, um, within that area. The complete street section is, we think is very exciting because it, it sets forth, um, some direction for non-motorized transportation and also would map the water trails on here as well, um, but essentially providing for loops on Harson's Island as well as through the mainland, providing primarily along, uh, Point Tremble, which is consistent with, um, the bridge to bay, uh, trail planning that's been done at the county level, um, looking for the, uh, future installation of bike lanes, um, that would be protected mostly, um, along, along this route, which should do a lot to promote, um, one, additional, um, opportunities for activity by township presidents as well as, uh, enhancing opportunities for, um, for water-related businesses in, in the area. Um, also, there was some discussion in the, in the draft that was circulated, um, on the Harson's Island, future Harson's Island Bridge. What the plan said in its original draft was that, um, under, uh, objective number five, under open and efficient land transportation, said explore available land opportunities and study the feasibility of constructing a bridge to provide direct behavioral access to Harson's Island with an action item to work with the county to seek, uh, funds for feasibility of a bridge to Harson's Island. Well, the planning commission also wanted to expand that, um, discussion because they felt like there were some other elements that, that should be included. And so they included a series of questions that should be answered related to items such as construction, location, environmental concerns and economic concerns. These are all questions that would need to be answered before, uh, the township would move forward with this type of action. Uh, and just to be clear, the, the master plan does not suggest a location for the bridge. Um, the planning commission supports the further study and the exploration of the bridge and recognizes that substantial studies and public input are going to be required before any action is taken. And then, of course, the bridge also requires regulatory approval from a number of different agencies if it does, uh, come to fruition in the future, which would include, to name a few, M.D.A.Q. Corps of Engineers, uh, Clay Township and more. Um, and then when we get into implementation, one of the, I think the really nice adds to this is the way the implementation section is, is established. We have zoning action items, advocacy action items and other action items. And they're outlined in an implementation table and it's broken down by topic. So this can serve as a, as a guide for the planning commission and the township board when they're looking to implement recommendations. They can go in here and actually check off ones or assign priorities. And this will be a working document that the planning commission can work with to, uh, implement the recommendations and help make the plan a reality. So the planning commission adopted this plan, um, by unanimous vote on November 17th. The township board can exercise its option to also adopt a master plan update per state law, which is why this item is before you this evening. And then a sample resolution of adoption has also been included, I believe, in your packets, uh, for your consideration. Um, and so I just want to, uh, see if anybody has any questions and recognize our, the team, um, that from my, um, firm that worked on this and principally Eric Fazini, who's on the call tonight with me, uh, and then also Matt Wojciechowski and Sri Kumar Gary were also, um, active participants in the plan. So turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod, I, reading this, one thing I, I, I did find, I found an error on page 54. Oh, I, it talks about, uh, that if prior to 2012, there was a special assessment district created in San Souci for kind of sewage or septic field. That, we have no record of that. I talked about, tried to make that happen and they around 2014, but none of the, um, um, entities in San Souci, I couldn't get any, uh, buy-in on it. So that I, there wasn't any, um, anything created.
Okay. Said page 54?
Yeah, I just noticed that.
Okay, well, that's a simple.
Second paragraph underscore.
Okay.
Um, it says Harson's Island relies on septics, subject treatments are processed wastewater. Prior to 2012, a special assessment district was established in the sounds, San Souci area, although no improvements were made. Um, that was never, there, there's no special assessment district there.
All right, so it was, it wasn't established. It was based, it was, uh, studied but not established with.
Right, I'm thinking it was probably in 2014. I had conversations with them trying to make it happen, but it, it never did happen.
Okay, we can just make that change as a title. That's fine. Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, I, as, as I, I, I talked to you, Rod, and, and. as, as I, I talked to you, Rod and, and Kathy and I, I have a problem. Not how, what was changed, but how it was amended and I, I mean, there, there's a very deliberate process for, that the state sets in front of us for approving a master plan. It has two public hearings, a, a public comment. Period. It, it's, you know, we have to send this, the plan for comments to our neighboring communities, rightfully so. And I'm not sure exactly when the, the, the rough draft was started, but it's been quite a while. And and like I said, I, on the November 17th meeting, when the Planning Commission adopted this, they did, and this, I got a couple of problems. It wasn't even on their published agenda that they're going to do this. Normally you would see on an agenda, the item, business items that you're doing for the meeting such as ours tonight. In fact, I amended ours tonight, reflected. And there was nothing about an amendment on, of the master plan on the published agenda, nor was it the agenda amended to reflect it. And that should, should have happened in my eyes. Then, you know, for some reason, the, the recording of, of the, of the meeting failed. And it, it just raised a lot of suspicion. And to cut to the chase, I mean, there's a perception of, has been circling this master plan of mistrust with the Playing Commission. I think we've had four or five people come to our meetings, our township meetings with concerns. A couple of them are on tonight. About, you know, the, it was primarily on about what's going on in Pearl Beach. I think there was some, a citizen from Perch Isles or Perch subdivision, Perch Isles also. So I, I just want to do this transparent, you know, I want to follow the rules basically. And like I say, I, I, I think it's a significant change when you add four or five pages into that really replaces two sentences. And into the master plan, when, when nobody from the public had a chance to comment on it or reflect on it and our neighboring communities. Cause I mean, way back, I think in 2012 or 13, I'm not sure. I got several letters from Algonac saying, you know, we, we really don't want a bridge. But it, it seems kind of sneaky that we send it to them. There's really nothing in the master plan, but two sentences about a, a, a bridge to the island. And then five minutes before the Plan Commission adopts it, they make an amendment that wasn't published on their agenda. They make amended, meant to add four, five, four pages concerning a bridge. So I, I would have no problem if this went through the whole public comment process. Maybe I'm, I mean, I, I've, I've made a, a commitment and to be as transparent as possible in everything we do here. And maybe I'm taking it too far. And if best case, the board can, can vote and, and, and do what they want to do with this, but that's my own feeling.
Yeah, already, already apparently we're in the master plan discussion items here, which was the next item down. And we did invite the local communities. Ira came in, New Baltimore came in. I don't know if Algonac refused, but they were also invited. So everything that you stated on there has been satisfactorily according to protocol.
Right.
I disagree totally with you on anything illegal that happened with any of the amendments that we put in, because that was, that was above board. You put in an amendment after our amendment, wanting to get our amendment knocked out of there. So you're saying that if our amendment was illegal, yours had to be illegal.
No, what I'm saying is the amendment for the bridge replacing the two sentences with three and a half pages was made November 17th. And nobody in the public or the other communities had a chance to do public comment on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rod, but those three pages that were put in were nothing more than basic construction ordinances.
Yeah, the, well, the majority of the pages that were put in there, well, the majority of the content of those couple of pages that were added was the, the questions that would be related to important questions that the, the township would want to answer related to environment, the economy, the construction, traffic impacts and the, and related. Also, a map was added just to show as a point of reference, the previous location, although the plan does not suggest that that's the future location, but the map was added as a point of information. So that's, I think that's one reason why it was substantially, it added more volume in terms of number of pages, but from a policy standpoint, I, my opinion is that it was really reaffirming what was previously stated, because it already stated in the plan draft that was circulated to explore available opportunities to study the construction of a bridge and also work with the, to seek federal funds for feasible feasibility study of the bridge. So that was already in the earlier draft. And I think the, the Planning Commission's intent was to try to really make the key issues that need to be explored, including public participation, part of the draft so that everyone could be aware that there's a lot that goes into constructing a bridge like this. It's not a guarantee. It may not ever work out. And then again, it might, but let's get all these questions answered and let's resolve them through a process. And here's some of the things we should probably be thinking about. And I know it was, you know, it was listed on the agenda, but it was just, it's listed as an action item. And I, I think that's the, the way the Planning Commission typically lists items. They just list it, you know, if they were doing a zoning ordinance, you'd list a zoning ordinance, solicit a site plan, you list a site plan. I just don't think they're historically more specific than that when it's listed on the agenda. And I do think that the Planning Commission has the ability to amend the master plan. And in this case, as I mentioned, they really weren't introducing something brand new. It was something that was mentioned in the earlier draft. It was an expansion of the data and the information and, and that would be associated with the recommendation that was made in that earlier draft. That's, that's my opinion anyway.
Thank you, Rod.
Brad, were, could you just tell me, were those four pages or three and a half pages, were they in the master plan when it went out to neighboring communities and to the public for comment?
No, there were the two items that I mentioned that mentioned the bridge that are, were on that, the one slide I showed you, that did mention that the part of this plan was exploring a future bridge. That was in the draft that went out to the adjacent communities. But the questions that should be answered and that, and the additional information that was added in those pages, that was not in the draft that, that went around to, that was an amendment that was done the night the Planning Commission voted on, on the master plan.
Thank you.
Is it my understanding, however, that the neighboring communities, I mean, this is just a beginning point. The neighboring communities are still going to have a chance to, you know, say something in the future. This doesn't put anything in stone. I mean, it seems like there's so many other hurdles that it's going to have to, you know, would go over before this bridge would actually become reality that I don't understand why it's such a point of contention, you know, other than maybe it's with your family already. I mean, that concerns me. Because your family runs the ferry and you're concerned about it. I, I just see this as a beginning point that something may never even happen. I mean, this master plan to me is very impressive. I, I, I mean, it's thorough. There's attention to detail. And in my opinion, it seems like these pages were added just so that people would know all of these concerns are going to be addressed. You know, the environmental concerns, the other community concerns, those were the reasons to add these pages, not to make it worse, but to make it better. And I mean, I'm very concerned that, you know, you say that you're not in the ferry business, but you're very upset with this plan specifically because that part of it.
Well, I, my problem was, is the process. And like I say, there's a very deliberate process that the state set up to.
I think they followed that process. I mean, they have, they, it was in there. It wasn't like they just threw something in there about the bridge. They, it was in there. They just added something to say, look, we're going to make sure we do everything right. This bridge would never go through unless everybody had a chance to, to talk about it. And you're saying that, you know, you don't want to do it because they didn't have a chance to talk about it, but they will have that chance.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah. Oh yeah. They, they will. There's just, there's one sentence that really, that, that bothers me. And it said, it's under the background. According to the Township Plan Commission finds that a bridge connection to Harson's Island is consistent with promoting health, safety and welfare of the community. Are they saying that the people on Harson's Island aren't safe? And then if, if that's, if that's the case, what about the people that live on Russell Island? And, and the out islands?
They don't live on Russell Island. They can't live there.
Oh, there, there's people there.
The much bigger population on Harson's Island. And I mean, there have been, there have been deaths because of the ferry and.
Oh, be careful.
Well, I, that's what I thought. I, I, it's what I've heard. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's not build a bridge to nowhere. Let's build a bridge. If you're going to build a bridge, make sure it's, it's going to benefit the people that are on the other side of the bridge. And that includes health, welfare and safety.
I love the.
For some reason, for some reason, if you're trying to downplay the safe and healthy of the people on Harson's Island because of the lack of a bridge, you're wrong, totally wrong.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, you know, is it, I, I just wish we would have had more time to have.
We've been going at this for almost two years. Artie, where you been?
Right, right. We have been, Mark, been going at it for two years, but this amendment, this change has only been in, in that since November 17th. And we started way back in June 9th.
The change in amendment was only supporting documentation, or supporting documentation. That's it.
Okay. I mean, that's okay. I mean, I just, I would have liked to seen this document or, or this updated. When the public comments.
Public hearings that we had, Rod. We've had, just about every month, we've had a public hearing on it.
Right. And the, the, this document was not a part of the draft during all those public.
That is, it had always been in there.
No, it hasn't. It got added November 17th.
That, that amendment, yeah, the, the rest of the document was in there. Listen, I'm not going to split hairs with you. I think, as I said before, we did it according to a protocol. And that's it. So.
Right. Either am I. I just, I just wish that this would have been in the, the document for public hearings, for public comments. The public hearings were close, were over with. The public comments were officially closed. And then this was added after the fact. And the only people that seen this, these changes, I didn't see it. My board didn't see it. The only people that seen it were, were the eyes of the Plan Commission. Nobody else in the township saw it.
But you confirm that the public will still have an opportunity down the road to comment. So it's not over, right?
If there, if there's a bridge, of course there will be. So it'll, it'll be a long haul, but I'm not concerned about a bridge. I'm concerned about the process of the master plan. That's what I'm, that, that's what my whole argument is. The process wasn't really followed like I, like it shouldn't be, like the state lays it out very deliberately.
Then Artie, why did you, why did you, why did you submit your own amendment?
I didn't submit a, I, no, what, what, I'll tell you what I did. It was, this was added in. I was kind of, I'm amazed that was added in at the last minute. I called up Rod and, and, or emailed Rod, hey, I'm kind of confused. I didn't even see it. He sent it to me. The next day, we had a Zoom meeting with Kathy Swy Cart and Rod. And I, I don't know, my board may have an issue on the process this was done. I said, they, they might have an issue. And you know, and then Rod said, well, well, maybe we can tweak it a little bit and, and make it so a little bit better. I goes, and I, I specifically said several times, I really do not like speaking for my board. My board has their own voice. I don't like speaking for the board. And he, he made a few tweaks and submitted it to Kathy and the Planning Commission to, to take a look at on their December meeting. And then they chose to take it off the agenda. They wouldn't even talk about it. I, I, I thought the prudent thing would have been just to revoke at a minimum, revoke, accepting the, the plan, because it was not on the agenda, the meeting before. It was on the agenda on their, the, the December meeting.
Yeah. When you're talking to Rod and Kathy and, and insisting on putting your own amendment into it, there goes your transparency of theory. And you're trying to backdoor the Planning Commission on this issue.
You know what, Mark? I, 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 I told him my concerns and I'll tell you what I did. I told him my concerns. I told him my concerns about the four, the, the three pages or whatever. I, I, I told him exact, I told him, I, why is there a map in, in our master plan of a plan that was, this map was denied. This plan was denied by the DEQ. Why is it in the master plan when this was denied? Number one. And then they had the section with concerns if a bridge was built. I actually added just top of my head about three or four concerns. And he actually added them into the, what we're voting on tonight. I was surprised to hear that. There, there was things added that we're voting on tonight in the master plan that I, I suggested. I was surprised to see that in there like, oh, for instance, you know, with a bridge, you'll, you'll be able to take heavier trucks over there and the roads aren't really built for the heavier trucks. So the township would have a concern about the, the vehicle weight and, and the, what the effect it would have on the roads of Harson's Island. And that, that's in here now. I was surprised to see that truthfully.
That's good, right? They're listening to you and.
Well, yeah, but, but like I say, I, the Planning Commission didn't vote on that. I didn't insist on it. I suggested it. And now it's in here.
Now that was in the, that was in the.
I'm trying to be transparent in the whole process. Go ahead, Rod.
I just want to declare that, that the language you, you were seeing tonight is the exact same language that the Planning Commission voted on, on November 17th. And they were, they accepted that language that, that was presented. And so just want to be clear, it's the exact same version they voted on is the same version that you're seeing.
Okay. I don't remember seeing, I don't remember seeing about pine contention for runoff in the first version.
The first version, there were some changes made after that, but that was the version that they, they accepted as being the one that they were going to accept. It, it included that, it included the language that you see tonight. They, they, they were able to look at that and they decided that that was, that was what they were accepting. Because, because we went back basically after, because they had made a couple of suggestions at the November 17th meeting. There were a few changes that they wanted. So we went back to them at that next meeting and said, look, here's the draft. It's got all the language in it. We want to. We want to make sure that this is what you had intended. And they agreed that it was fine as it is and nothing else needed to be amended. So that's, I guess that's the better explanation of it. It got, they, they looked at it, um, at their next meeting and they were, they were in agreement that what was in there was reflecting what they wanted to see.
So the bridge was in the original before they made these changes on November seventeenth, right? It was already in there.
There was already, yeah, there were already.
They wouldn't have added the two or three pages to make it better, even though they were trying to address your concerns. But if they wouldn't have added those two or three pages, you would have been okay with it then, Artie?
Yeah, because, yeah, they had basically two sentences, or three sentences.
But I mean, it was still in there that there was going to be a possible alternative transportation.
Yeah, I have no, no problem with that, because it went through the whole process.
Explain it and make it better and get more thorough. That's when you had a problem with it? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I, I, I have a problem with it because it didn't go through the process and the public didn't have a chance to.
Well, the public knew for months that the alternative bridge plan was in there, so they knew it. All that they added was all the concerns about environmental and all these things, which, you know, just made it better. I can't, I just don't understand why you have such a problem with it already, because it's not like, at the last minute, they put the bridge in there, it was in there all along.
Well, I'm kind of, wait a minute, I'm kind of concerned why everybody thinks it's okay if they make it better. There's a reason why there's a public period in a public comment. Why, why would you think it's okay to just add four pages when it didn't go out for comment?
Well, what I was told it was out for comment, first of all, that, and they are still going to have a chance to comment later. And none of it, none of it is in play, it's not like a bridge is moving forward, it's just an idea. It just sounds like it's in, in an idea phase right now.
No, they approve and adopt this master plan after adding pages that were never, went out to public comment. That's absolutely ludicrous.
I, I just can't understand it.
I, I don't understand why you think it's okay. I mean, okay, so we'll just do it here and then we'll just do it there. And then next thing you know, everybody's like, why are you sneaking stuff in? We're not trying to, we're trying to be transparent. So what is the problem of putting it back out for public comment?
I still think the public is going to have a chance to comment on it. That's what everybody explained to me.
We're approving it tonight.
Oh, okay.
There, yeah, I mean, unless we want to postpone it, the, the public comment, my point is, the public comment has been closed. The public hearings have been closed.
Seventeenth, the, all that was still sent to the neighboring communities.
It was sent to them months ago.
I've heard it was sent again on November seventeenth, is that wrong?
Right.
November seventeenth is when they held the public hearing. They voted to approve it, subject to some amendments. And I think after you hold a public hearing, I believe the planning commission has the right to amend, just like after you, as a township board, um, have, uh, a pub, after a public hearing's been held on zoning amendments, you can make some minor amendments, um, that, that aren't necessarily part of the draft that is part of a public hearing. So what happened is, on November seventeenth, they were presented with the draft. The planning commission wanted a few minor changes made, they, they, they adopted it, subject to those changes. We went to the next meeting and gave them an updated draft. And just to confirm that that's what they wanted to see in it, because they were presented with all of that language in a separate memo, um, um, at the, at the November seventeenth agenda. They had all of that in writing at the time of the public hearing. And, and so they had that. We've represented the, the draft at the next meeting, just to confirm that this is exactly what they wanted. They said, yes, it is, and it's ready to go forward to the township board. And so that's the draft that you have before you, the same one they looked at when they were confirming the changes were made.
Well, there was a public hearing, an opportunity for public comment.
There was a public hearing, right, and, and the draft that was circulated for public hearing did mention the bridge, um, but it just didn't include all those additional questions and some additional language. But the bridge was mentioned in the draft that was circulated to the surrounding communities.
I got it.
The, the email that you sent me, Rod, with, uh, original for, that you gave to the planning commission for the amendment.
Yes.
And then I raised a few concerns. I mean, this is neither here nor there, but, I mean, I'm just trying to make a point. One of the concerns that I had with, with stormwater runoff and how it impacts nearby property for water retention, that was not in your original memo. On your June seven, November seventeenth, the ones that, the one that was voted on by the planning commission. But my concern is in the rough draft now that we're voting on now. So the planning commission didn't even see that.
They did see it when it went back the next month. They saw the, the exact draft you're looking at today. They saw it, and they confirmed that that, based upon all the, all of what they reviewed, they confirmed that that's what they wanted to approve.
At that meeting, they did not revoke on it and accept the master plan as presented. They took it off the agenda. Um, you know, be, before you just had the, the map um, of the old bridge and the, the new version now says, okay, here's a existing map, but it was denied by the DEQ. They probably didn't.
That was already mentioned in the text, by the way, in the previous version. Yeah, it was in the text.
I didn't see that in mine that you sent me. Um, but, yeah, I just had, uh, uh, it's hard to see, empty, em, you know, that, that's what I got.
But it was in the body of the text that was describing the bridge in the previous version. It mentioned that that was not approved. And so when, when the map was inserted, that same, basically the same language is just, was put under the map, just to confirm that, um, that that was not an approved bridge.
Right. Like I say, I mean, I, I, I'm just really worried about the process. And I'm trying to be transparent. And I know because my brother owns the ferry, everyone has these things. Uh, you know, assuming I'm, I'm doing it because of this reason or that reason. I'm doing it because I want to follow the, the, the rate process. I don't want, I'm trying to protect our township. I don't want us being in prob, having any problems if it gets challenged or anything down the road, so. Um, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I, I don't think it's a whole lot to ask for a master plan that has been presented to everybody before we approve it. And everyone has had a, had, had a chance to comment on it.
Well, there was another thing we're voting on tonight that, you know, you talk about transparency. Mr. Greitab didn't even know that, you know, he was replacing someone. And it seemed like Ms. Schwaykart and Mr. Baines', you know, emails to you didn't even get answered. And those two things kind of seem to be connected with this, so.
Oh, we'll talk about that.
All right, well, I mean, if you're, if you're all about transparency, I wish that would have happened.
Um. So does someone want to make a motion, or, or with the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the, adopting the master plan, resolution two zero, two zero dash two eight for years of twenty twenty through twenty zero five.
Okay. Do we have us? Go ahead.
To twenty twenty-five, okay.
Hey, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have motion and we have a second. Um, any, any other discussion? What, what are the adverse reactions? If we sent this back to the planning commission to have it open back up, have more public comments, so we lose what, a month? Lose a month time?
No, actually. Go ahead, Rod. I, I can answer that, sure. Um, no, the way the statute works is if you choose not to approve it, um, you would state your reasons why. It would go back to the planning commission. The planning commission would then make whatever adjustments are necessary, um, to address the concerns. It would then get redistributed to all the surrounding communities. There would be a forty-two day review period. Then the planning commission would hold another public hearing. Then it would come back to you. That's, the state statute outlines that process, so that, that would, that's how it would work.
I, I just think that you're, you're putting our, the board of trustees in a peculiar spot, because maybe, maybe they feel differently, maybe they don't think this is a significant change. That, that's fine too. Um, but what, I, you know, there, it's, it's been changed, the, the master plan's been changed without public input. So you're asking the board of trustees to make a decision on the master plan without any public input, where the planning commission has had several chances to get public input. The board of trustees has, has not. Um, so I mean, I'll just tell my board, we, we have options, you, you can, we can pass it tonight. Whether the board's pleasure is, we could reject it and send it back. Tell the planning commission that, you know, we have to do, we want to see a public comment period on, on this. Um, or we can postpone it and, and talk about it another time, too. Um, we do have a motion, uh, before us to approve it, so.
Well, if we, if we send it back, by then you got a new planning commission in place with new people that you've appointed, right? We don't know if that's going to, what that's.
Well, we might have one person new, we don't know yet.
Okay. Just want to understand it.
Yep. Um.
This, Artie, this is Carol Thompson.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm listening through all this and I agree that it should go through the public notice steps with.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, Carol, but I'm sorry, I'm going to have to mute you through this, this part.
That's why, um, the public comment should be at the end.
Right, I'll, the public comments would be after we voted, then. All right, um. Any more discussion? Hearing now, a roll call vote, please.
Cindy Valentine, no. Crystal Regan.
Oh.
No. Kristy Hilton.
No.
Artie Bryson.
No.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
No. She, she's saying no.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion denied, is denied two, or five to two. Do we have any other motions to postpone it, or, or or a motion to send, go ahead, Rod.
Yeah, I think the appropriate thing, um, this, if I might add, would be to, to, for the township board to make a motion to send it back to the planning commission. And then if it's your desire that they take the current draft and recirculate it and have a public hearing and then reconsider and send it back to you, then that's fine, make that motion. Um, or give, make sure you give them direction in terms of what you want them to do. But I would just make a motion to send it back to the planning commission.
Okay, or we could postpone it, too.
Yeah, of course.
Right. Um, so, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, send the master plan back to the planning commission for, uh,
For?
By revision.
For, for public hearings.
Yeah, for a public hearing. There we go.
I'll support it.
Okay, we have motion and support for, uh, sending back the master plan to the planning commission, uh, for public, um,
Public hearing, public hearing and comment, right?
Public, public hearing and public comment.
And redistribution to neighboring communities.
Yes.
That's part of it, yes.
Can we include that in part of the motion?
Included.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, by law, that to, uh, to revisit. By law, the states that sat out by, to revisit or to review, it, it goes to neighboring communities. And, and it was a public period for forty-two days, if I remember right.
I thought I read sixty-three days in the MTA, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, sixty-three for a new plan.
For the new plan, but for revisit is forty-two.
Okay.
Um. Okay, do we have any more discussion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. And for everyone in the planning commission, I just want to say, I just want to make sure this is done right and it doesn't bite us in the butt. And I think that's what the, um, why we're doing it this way. All right, I gotta find my agenda. It's the first page of it. Uh. All right, next on the agenda. That's an old one. We have appointments, uh, to the planning commission.
Well, I'm going to start off with a motion. Make a motion to cancel the planning commission appointments on the agenda and postpone.
I'll second that, Mark. What I'd like to do is, um, since Mr. Greitab with, with Drew is, is, uh, have, and, and Maureen, and for everybody else, how, how this works by state statute, the planning commission members are appointed or, or recommended by the, the township supervisor. It's the township supervisor's duty, they shall present the, um, recommendations to the board. And then the, the board, uh, uh, either approves or, or, or not approve. So, um, that was my recommendation, but right now, I, 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 I just soon postpone. Any recommendations, I, I'd like to have a conversation, a private conversation with both Kathy Schwaykart and Harold, and, uh, and then go from there, so.
I disagree, I think we should vote on it tonight, because.
Well, we, we have, we have a motion to postpone right now. So if you, if you want to vote on it tonight, we, we would have to, to vote no on the motion that Mark made. And then someone else can make the motion to, uh, vote on tonight. So do we have a discussion? So right now, we have a motion to postpone the appointments to the planning commission. Any discussion? Hearing now, roll call vote.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Oh.
Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, last thing on agenda, I think, because I can't find mine, is to appoint, Ken Lopowski to the, as an alternate on the ZPA. I'm still, still going to recommend this because we have room for two alternates on the ZPA. And right now, we only have one, that's Debbie Addy. And so I, I still am going to, uh, recommend to the board that we, uh, we, uh, approved, uh, Ken Lopowski as the second alternate on the ZPA.
A motion to, uh, approve Ken Lopowski for this, as a second alternate to the ZPA, because we only have one alternate.
Right. Okay, we have emotions or support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any, uh, discussion? Ken's been in our, uh, I don't have it in front. Ken's been in our, uh, I don't have it in front of me. It's lost in my shuffle papers. He's been in our community for about forty-five years. He's sold real estate, um, for about fifteen years, I believe. Um, in, in our, in our, um, community. And, uh, he's very well educated. He actually has a degree at, um, uh, what is it? GMI as mechanical engineering. And, uh, he expressed interest to me as, uh, being a member of the ZBA. And I, I, I actually sent him all the criteria, what's supposed to be, uh, uh, obtained or, or, or the things you gotta look at to approve a variance, the five rules and, uh, and, um, yeah, he, he seemed very motivated to, to serve us, serve our community on the ZBA. Any more discussion? Hearing and, uh, is there no discussion? Okay, all in favor? If someone wants to, does someone want a roll call vote? Okay, all in favor of appointing Ken Lopowski to the ZBA? Sing the five by saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. Cindy Valentine.
You mean board member com?
That's what I meant, board member comments.
Um, no, I'm just glad to see that the, uh, the master plan will go back out to the public. I, I don't have a problem with necessarily what's in it. I just want to make sure that everyone has a chance to take a look at it and give their feedback on it. That's all. Nothing personal against anybody. I just want to see it done right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, Mark?
Yeah, same here. I, uh, it's okay to go back for, uh, for a public hearing on that planning, uh, on that master plan. Uh, just ensuring that the, uh, original verbiage is still in there and not been changed. Also, I'd like to congratulate the, uh, fire department's, uh, new hires, uh, coming on board. I wish they were here, but we'll sue them eventually. And, uh, the Algonquin Lions Club, uh, we delivered, uh, two hundred and fifty food baskets on Saturday at five AM to senior citizens.
Hmm, good for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Joanne?
Um, along with all the other things that the planning commission is going to do to bring this, take it back and open it up to the public, I would like to personally have a hard copy of this master plan as it sits right now.
Okay, I'll print it out.
It's in your mailbox, man.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, who, who, Chris?
Thanks, Artie. Yeah, listen, I, I appreciate the effort that's taking place. I appreciate what the planning commission is doing. It's been eight years. I mean, it's, it's overdue. It, it's, it's time to update this, and I think we can all agree on that. Um, we want to make sure that it's done legitimately, transparently. And I'm not gonna get in the way of a unanimous recommendation from the planning department. Um, if, if that committee says that they support this and it's unanimous again, you're wholeheartedly gonna have my vote to support that. Um, I will not stand in the way. But I do appreciate you, uh, sending it back down and revisit it. And, uh, encourage people to, to have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Christie, Chrissy, are you still on?
I'm still on.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate that I'm glad that we're doing the right thing to follow the process so that we can get this put through our planning commission the right way and it comes to us the right way. And we can move forward with it.
Hey, what day are you open to, uh, next week?
Uh, Tuesday, the twenty, oh, twenty-ninth? Tues, next Tuesday.
The twenty-ninth?
Yes. We'll be open, uh, our normal hours, um, just closed for the twelve to one for lunch. Um, normal hours for last minute tax payments for, um, twenty twenty. You know, if you want them paid in twenty twenty.
Uh, the Dropbox, that, that works too?
That works as well, but that, if it, if it goes in the Dropbox after Tuesday, then it will, you know, the office is closed. It will not be recorded until the tw, until twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So it needs to be in the office, uh, neck, by next Tuesday in order for it to be counted. But we'll be checking the Dropbox all day long.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Um, and to wrap it up too, yeah, I just wanted to tell the plan, I, you know, I, I, you could tell there's been a lot of hard work in, in this master plan. There's no doubt about it. And like, uh, everyone says, it's, it's just the process. We want to make sure we're right. And, and, uh, plus with all these virtual meetings and the Zoom meetings and everything, I really, it'd be nice if we could have a live meeting uh, with public comments for people. I don't know if, if we'll be able to afford that or, or have that chance, but that's what I would really like to see. Um, but that depends on the whole COVID situation. Um.
Artie, don't forget Maureen.
What's that?
Don't forget Maureen.
Oh, shoot, Maureen. I'm sorry. How you doing? How could I forget you?
Okay, I've been pretty vocal. I've been too vocal tonight, but I just want to say, I think the work the fire department did, um, on this meeting, like, with the San Soucy, you know, with our Lions Hall helping together. I'm sure that was a long time coming, getting that septic tank, problem solved. Four new hires. I mean, wow, that's really a great job. And, uh, all, I mean, we talked about, mostly about the bridge in this master plan, but there's so many good things in here that I am thoroughly impressed. You know, as you know, I mean, I'm fairly, I'm, I'm new to this. So when I saw this master plan, I just soaked it up all weekend long. So thorough, so much detail. Um, so I, I just, I, I gotta say, it's, it's looking really bright for our township with, in all these things. If any, you know, so many of them can come to fruition. And I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. And, um, I'm happy to, to serve and be able to be with you all a couple times a month.
All right, sounds good. Thank, thank you.
When we can do it in person.
Yeah, for sure.
I, I say Merry Christmas also to everyone. Stay masked up.
Right. But, uh, yeah, I just want to reiterate too that, you know, there's, there's so many positive things going on in this township. Um, and grants and, and things, you know, we got, uh, uh, well, the St. Clair County, they got the, uh, grant for the, um, the, uh, beach park, uh, over here across from Catch Twenty-two. And in fact, we just closed on another house, the White House behind the real estate for the county, uh, just this past week. And, uh, you know, that's, that's gonna be going full, well, it, like everything else, is hurry up and wait. We have the nature park on Harson's Island where we received, uh, um, a total of, for, uh, grants. That nine acres on Harson's Island only costed the township, uh, about fifteen thousand dollars for nine acres. Um, I have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget this year for, to start developing it and for, uh, for engineering on it, uh, for, you know, phase, probably be three phases to do that. We got the bike path being worked on. That's a very popular, uh, path. I had so many people say, hey, my God, that, you know, what you did so far, it, it, that, what, what the township did, it's looking good. It's looking nice. And and, uh, we just, we just have a lot of, um, positive things going on. And let me tell you, the, you know, there, there, there's people hurting financially and emotionally and, and all different kinds of ways, uh, right now. But our community has really come forward to helping people. Um, I see it every day, but, um, we're, uh, I'm, I'm thankful we live in this, uh, community and, uh, it, uh, it shows we have a lot of spirit and, uh, um, we should be proud of that, so. Um, I know I am. And, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'm, I'm sure twenty twenty-one's gonna be better than twenty twenty. And, uh, with that, we have one more, uh, one more, uh, motion. Joanne?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All, all in favor, eyes?
Hi.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Thank you.
Night.
Good night. Merry Christmas.